This is the September 7, 2021, meeting of the Esong Meadow Planning Board. Those in attendance are George Kingston, Cassandra Saraswello, Jonathan Torscha, and myself, Russell Denver. I am required to inform the people that this is being recorded by LCAT for distribution and viewing it at any other time. And I'm required to ask if there's anyone in the audience who might be recording the meeting, and if so, would you raise your hand so you can be brought into the meeting and let us know how you might be recording this meeting? Hearing none, I believe the first item of business would be acceptance of our August 17, 2021 meeting minutes. Hopefully, people have an opportunity to review them. Does anybody have any corrections, suggestions, edits that they'd like to put forward? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the August 17, 2021 meeting minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
My consent.
You're muted.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a second?
Yes.
Okay, so motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, so all by roll call, all in favor, Cassandra Saraswello?
Aye.
Okay, George Kingston?
Aye.
John Torscha?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Mr. Torscha, first order of business, please.
Yes, item number one under waivers, case SPRW 2021-39. Request for site plan review waiver for roof-mounted solar array and battery storage at 49 Industrial Drive, Assessor's parcel ID 8-2-9A in the Industrial Garden Park Zoning District. Applicant representative Tyler Welsh, RPG Energy Group, 5610 Dividend Road, Indianapolis, Indiana.
Mr. Welsh, there he is. So we can't hear you or see you, Mr. Welsh?
Okay, can you guys see me and hear me?
We can now, thank you.
Good deal.
Welcome to our meeting. So tell us about the proposed project, please.
Yeah, of course. First off, thank you for your time. This is a renewable energy project on behalf of American Saw and Manufacturing Co. for Stanley Blacken decker, and this is one of portfolio projects throughout the U.S. And we're focusing our time here as of late, as Bethany and Rebecca both know. Here in East Long Meadow, there's actually a project about a block and a half or so away. But regarding 79 Industrial, we have a fully boused solar photovoltaic system on the roof. And as you'll notice, some of the images included in the site plan review waiver, we provided an aerial view as well as some street views traveling east and west down Industrial Drive. Now, if I could share my screen, is that possible?
Yes. Hold on one second, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, you're all set.
Good deal. Can you guys see that okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. This is the aerial view of the rooftop, and you can see my mouse here. This was at the time the proposed system size dated from the application submittal. Since then, picture this layout, but minus about 150 modules or so, a module being a solar panel. This project, majority of its footprint, like I said, is on the roof, but down below next to the utility transformer, transformer, you'll notice the ESS battery storage system here to the right. To the left of that, we have the switchgear. And then to the left of that, we have a system disconnect for disconnect reasons. Also, not recommendation, but requirement of the utility. Between this equipment pad here that you see in this aerial in the building, there'll be some trenching of conduit. And you know, between the equipment pad and the building, that's about the extent or the footprint of our scope now. That being said, we are in the middle of impact study with National Grid. And if the location of this equipment pad adjusts, you know, just slightly, we can continue to keep the town updated. But as of now, this is the direction they've given us. So it's certainly evolving, but it will not get any bigger than what's shared on my screen right now, so.
So where is that equipment related to the street? So it's right in front?
Okay. Yeah, it's right in front, and wants to get the view right in front of the property.
Okay.
It was about 90 or 95 feet from face of battery storage container to the property line, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
All right. Want to keep going?
We have been working with Rebecca and Bethany here to get us to this site plan review waiver. And you know, offline, I'll have some questions about next steps here, but you know, illustratively speaking, this is what the project will look like. Like I said, it's going to reduce in size some, and it's going to offset behind the meter this facility's annual consumption. Now, like I said, this has been included in a much broader portfolio of projects, also including one right down the road at 301 Chestnut that is much more complex than this. But I guess for the purposes of this meeting, what you see here, proposed improvement-wise are the solar modules, and like I said, the equipment on within the equipment pad. There's not, there's no more components visible from the street that you're not seeing here, so.
And what's the height and width of the outside unit?
Yeah, so the heights of the ESS container will range, will range, it's going to be between eight and nine feet, it's about eight and a half, given the height of the concrete pad. The switchgear here, which contains the breakers that feed the ESS container to the ride, as well as the strings above to that lead to the modules, that piece of equipment's about a foot shorter than the ESS container. And then, I'd say the top of this disconnect here, I would, looking at it, it'd be about as tall as me, about six foot or so, so.
So what is located in that building?
Located in this building is processes for, I'm not, it's industrial, obviously, but it's heavy industrial. I'm not recalling exactly what is being processed in there, but the major takeaway and what we've designed the system to and its size is based on their annual usage and their high consumption. So this facility here is, you know, offsetting a percentage of the powerage here. And this is part of one building of American Saw and Manufacturing, like I said, the other located 301 Chestnut, which is neighboring project, so.
Do you have anything else you want to add before you open it up to the board?
No, I mean, these are the major components here. What you see now is representation and direction from, you know, design decisions mainly driven by National Grid and in RPG Energy Group, who you're, you know, who I represent. So unless you guys have questions for me.
I will open it up to the board members if they have any questions. George?
Mr. Chairman, my only question is, it looks like those components on the outside are up against blacktop. I don't know, I know that they're moving tractor trailers around there. Is there any consideration of putting in bollards or guardrail to protect that equipment?
Yeah, that's a great question. What you see here is actually, it's a gravel access drive to the transformer. And you know, we could easily extend that to just the front of ours, but there, yes, there could be potential for the bright yellow security bollards there. But I guess, like I said, there's none there in front of the transformer now, and this is about, it was 90 to 95 feet off the property line, so we can certainly include those as needed, George.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Bethany, your name has been mentioned a couple of times. Can you jump in and tell us what your thoughts are on this? Any concerns on your part?
I don't have any concerns. I did check with the fire department chief, and he's all set with the proposed.
Okay. So there's a request for a site plan waiver. Do I have a motion to accept or approve the site plan waiver?
I will move to approve it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. Any further discussion? So can you close your window, please?
I can.
Okay, now I can see everyone again. Okay, by roll call, Ms. Saraswello?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torscha?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. All right, best of luck, it looks like a wonderful project.
Yeah, thank you, Russell, thank you, everyone.
Take care, bye-bye. Next item, Mr. Clerk?
All right, item number two, case SPRW 2021-40. Request for site plan review waiver for a change of ownership for a self-storage facility at 182 Benton Drive, Assessor's parcel ID 8-5A-17 in the Industrial Garden Park Zoning District, applicant is SROA 182 Benton Drive, East Long Meadow, MA.
Someone from the petition applicant here?
Don't see any hands.
Okay. What's the board's pleasure?
I don't see any issues with this. I mean, it's the same thing that's there, they're changing ownership, provided that they are aware of all the original constraints on that project, I see no issue with changing ownership.
Okay. Bethany, have you had any discussion with the applicant?
No, I have not.
Okay. All right, so George, you want to make that in form of a motion?
I'll move to approve it.
Go with second?
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, and any discussion? Hearing none, so vote on the approval. Mr. Torscha?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Ms. Saraswello?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well, so that passes. Next item, Mr. Clerk?
Right, public hearings, item number three, case site 2021-6 Deer Park Drive. Request for site plan review for the installation of a seven plus or minus foot fence and storage of equipment and material associated with CWA Realty Business Operations at Deer Park Drive, Assessor's parcel IDs 11-6-4A in the Industrial Garden Park Zoning District, applicant CWA Realty, 47 Warehouse Street, Springfield, MA, continued from August 17.
Is there someone from the petitioner available? And while you're might be coming into the meeting, Bethany, so Mr. Kingston raised an issue with respect to adding an additional item to the site plan. They refiled the site plan, was everything sufficient on your end?
I guess they did. They didn't refile the whole application, it's just a revised site plan.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And it met your concerns? George, did it meet your concerns?
No, quite frankly.
All right.
It doesn't show the required landscaping, doesn't show the required setback. So I, all I see is a fence. There's nothing there to show the required setback. The fence does not respect setback, and there's no landscaping shown. The structures that are on both sites are not shown. I know that they're contending that those structures are temporary, but they're structures. Any structure is temporary, you can always tear it down or move it, but they're not shown. So those are my concerns.
Okay. Hi, petitioner, so are you? Good to see you in the same, on the same place. So do you want to address those concerns?
We have also, Larry Levine should be in on this meeting on our behalf.
I know, Mr. Levine. You're muted, you're muted, Larry.
How am I now?
Now you're good. Okay. Good to see you.
Good to see all of you.
Okay.
Welcome to Cassandra. For the record, Larry Levine, attorney for Levine Law, representing CWA Realty. Just after your August 17 meeting, the applicants contacted me to get my advice input and advice on these projects. And I will tell you, I've been out to the site three times now, and with all due respect to the board and to the zoning bylaws, I really don't think that this proposal warrants or is within the jurisdiction of site plan review. Having said that, and told my clients that, they would still like to go forward. They want to be cooperative citizens, they want to assist and have the property in presentable condition. But I reserve that right, what I just suggested, that's my view.
So I'd be interested to know why you believe that?
I believe that under the special regulations for Industrial Garden District, it appears that outside storage is allowed as of right, and the real reason for their submittal was they wanted to put a fence around each of the parcels, the next item on the agenda. And the reason for the fencing was there's a great deal of dumping of trash, illegal dumping, and it's not just their site, but other sites along Deer Park Drive. So as you may have known, there are concrete blocks that they installed, which technically doesn't meet the statement of requirement for fencing in that section five of the special use regulations. So because there's not a structure there, and George and I may differ, the gate posts, there were two of them, in my view, are treated the exact same way that the trailers are there or the equipment that's there. It's all part of storage. They do not use those two gatehouses for any other purpose other than bringing it to when they have excavation or sites, they have to move, just like they'd move the equipment, they move the trailers, they would move those gatehouses. And in fact, those gatehouses have been moved beyond that 50-foot buffer that's required. As far as the landscaping and showing where the equipment, as well as the trailers are stored, the 50 feet, again, I go back to Article Five, until the point that they actually construct and put some structures within the parcels. The way I read the site plan review and combining reading Article Five, I don't know that this falls within the parameters of site plan review. I've been to the site, they have, in fact, moved most of all the equipment and trailers back. The, you know, if one wanted to look at it and whether the appearance is annoying to, as compared to other locations within Industrial Garden, yes, it doesn't lend itself to a pristine site, but that's the nature of their business. And I think they've done everything that's required. There are two or three pieces of equipment on the parcel we're talking about now, which is at the end of the cul-de-sac, that were not moved, and that's because there are large hornet's nests within the cabs of each of those. They are trying to find a manner to remove those hornet nests so they safely can pull them back. But on the other parcel, though, is the next agenda item, they have done a fine job of moving everything back. They want to place chain link fencing around the perimeter of each parcel with some view slats as Article Five speaks to, I mean, Article Five of the special use regulations. So I understand George's concern, he and I may disagree, but I think that they're living up to the requirements of the zoning bylaw with the use they're having within there now, which is merely storage. It's, they'll come at time, hopefully, in the near future, where they intend to move their operations entirely to East Long Meadow, and then there'll be architectural drawings, et cetera, for permanent structures. Until that point, I think that what they've submitted is possibly more than I would submit, but I merely educate, I don't make those decisions. And they want to work with the board, they want to be good citizens of the town, and they're making every effort to do that.
So what would just, this might be off the beaten path a little bit, but what would be your interpretation of the fact that West Mass Area Development Corporation waived the requirements of certain items not be stored on the property, no junk, so, you know, no junk, et cetera, et cetera, and its impact on the East Long Meadow zoning ordinance?
The, I was involved in that purchase. I was involved in the waiver of those restrictions that West Mass has on the whole district, practically.
Was it just for those individual sites and not the entire, not all the properties at West Mass in Deer Park?
I think it covered all the properties within, it didn't?
I think, I got a copy of that deed, and I think it spoke directly to those parcels.
Well, that was the waiver.
Right, the waiver.
That was the specific waiver for their parcels.
Okay, but it doesn't waive, but it certainly wouldn't waive the requirements of the East Long Meadow zoning ordinance.
Oh, no, 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 no. But if one read those waivers of the restrictions, the restrictions covered storage of equipment, et cetera, and in fact, in the waivers, the waivers speak that even though the storage of equipment, et cetera, might be obnoxious or unsightly, is the term they use, we are still granting the waiver and allowing CWA Realty, or their successor, to make that use of the property. So they are well aware
Oh, yeah.
of what the site was, and they granting the waivers, and I think an indication that they're comfortable allowing that use and because of the nature of the business.
Not disputing their use of that and what they want to do with it, just wanted to get your opinion on whether it would, whether you were of the opinion that it would also waive requirements of the petitioner as it relates to the zoning ordinance for the town of Esong Meadow?
No, separate and independent.
Okay. So I've done enough questioning. So George, do you want to jump in? Do you have follow-up questions?
Yeah, I'd ask through the chair, I'd like to ask Mr. Levine for the, what he deems a premise is. Okay, the projects requiring site plan review includes structures or premises, and any change in use to a structure or premise will require a site plan review. And I'm looking at section 7.41 of the bylaw at this point. To me, a lot is a premise. I may be wrong there, you're the lawyer. Perhaps you could inform us on that?
I think that the change of use would go beyond merely storing equipment. I think that the more specific you get, which is in with Article Five, supersedes the general intent of site plan review. So specificity, I think, controls, and that's why I say, even though if they were constructing something, I think that definitely site plan review. When the specific use regulations appear to allow as of right outside storage, and then go further to speak of the specific fence requirements, I think that overrules because of that particular use, the outside storage. That's my two cents.
And just to the arments, just so you're aware, I think we're all supportive of business moving into town, there's no question about it. But I know that Mr. Levine, who also served with Mr. Kingston and I on a charter commission that changed the former government six or seven years ago, one thing that we kept hearing is the townspeople wanted to make sure that everything was done, you know, that every T was crossed and every I dotted. And so when we referenced last time, we want to make sure that it's done correctly. That's kind of why we're taking the time to kind of go through all this, to make sure that everything is done correctly. We're not saying it's, we're not trying to say someone's trying to slide something in, we're not saying that at all. Just want to make sure that every I is dotted and every T is crossed, that's all, so. All right, George, other questions? Or other board members? John, Cassandra? No? Okay. So we have a, so this is a public hearing, am I correct, John?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So I will now open it up to anyone who wishes to be heard on this matter. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to be heard on this matter? Hearing none or seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll make that second.
All right, so any discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? Hearing none, by roll call, Ms. Saraswello? I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torscha?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Okay, back to the board. So why don't we start with a motion to approve? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, so by roll call, Mr. Torscha?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Nay.
Ms. Saraswello?
Aye.
And I'm a a as well. Okay, that matter passes, next item.
Right, item number four, case site 2021-7 Deer Park Drive. Request for site plan review for the installation of a seven plus or minus foot fence and storage of equipment and materials associated with CWA Realty Business Operations at Deer Park Drive, Assessor's parcel ID 11-2-2B in the Industrial Garden Park Zoning District, applicant CWA Realty, 47 Warehouse Street, Springfield, MA, continued from August the 17th.
Mr. Levine, do you want to address this?
Basically, the
Uh, basically, the issues are similar. Um, there should be no equipment, no gatehouse, no other storage right now within the fifty feet of the street line. Again, there'll be a removal of the concrete blocks in front and installation of that seven foot chain link fence with appropriate um, visual obstacles. Uh, am I correct Charlie and Will?
Yes, yes you are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Questions from the board? So I, I would ask one, one thing, so is it a uh, clear chain link fence? Or is there going to be any um, you see that like fabric along the fence?
Charlie, you know best what's going to go there, or Will?
It would be a chain link fence with the privacy slats slid inside of them.
Okay, thanks. Okay. So again, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing, anybody here wishes to be heard? I'll say again, anyone wishing to be heard on this matter? Hearing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, uh, any discussion? Hearing none on the motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Ms. Sarah Swallow?
Aye.
And I'm a aye as well. Back to the board. What's the board's pleasure? Someone wish to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Kingston?
Nay.
Ms. Sarah Swallow?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, thank you gentlemen.
Very much.
Thank you people, thank you.
I believe the next item, Bethany, can you kind of walk us through this letter from, from, from the town clerk?
Sure, so this is really just um, clarifying the process for when a um, a member of the planning board or one of the other boards um, is appointed as a member of the community preservation committee. Um, I believe she sat down with John as well as the town manager to kind of pencil out this process, so it's clear moving forward. Um, I guess in the past, um, the appointments hadn't been at the right, they had been a year and they're supposed to be three years, so there were some discrepancies over the years and over the different um, staff who had filled those positions, so this just clarifies that process um, more as an FYI moving forward.
So we don't need to re-nominate John for life?
Correct, I was a little confused when I first saw this letter as well, I was like, hmm, John's already here. Um, but it's really just nailing down the process, so it's clear moving forward.
So uh, Cassie, just so you know that uh, members of the planning board also have second uh, things to do uh, as being a member of the planning board. So we, I know we have a, we have a representative with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, Mr. Kingston is the representative. Um, who's our alternate, George?
I am.
John is the alternate. We are also required to submit a member to be uh, on the community preservation committee. And John was nominated and grate, gratefully accepted, and I think you're now Chair of the Community Preservation Committee.
Yeah, so I was involved in uh, kind of pushing for this letter, just so that every uh, board in town that appoints a representative, it's clear that it's three years, because we're having the confusion, kind of had the confusion process of people being only appointed for one year, so then people need to get reappointed, so this just streamlines things and it's kind of a part of a larger project that I'm working on and just streamlining the whole um, organization of the committee, so that everything, so.
Thank you, so we also have a chair and a vice chair uh, of this board. George is the vice chair and John is the clerk of the board. And we reorganize at the last, or the first meeting in July uh, of every year, so you weren't on the board yet. So we'll make sure we take care of you next year. All right, director's report, Bethany?
Yeah, so a couple updates on a few uh, very different things. Um, the town clerk um, notified me today that the adoption of the general code is ready to undergo the process of um, public hearings. So I believe what that will look like is a town, um, town council will vote to recommend it to planning board at their next um, meeting, which is September fourteenth. Um, and then there's a pretty quick timeline uh, where the council has to adopt it by December thirty-first, so I will try to get it on the planning board's first October meeting. Um, so we can start that process on our end before kicking it back to town council.
So what does that mean?
So that means um, the, the town council's bylaw committee has been working on the recutification of the town's general and zoning bylaws, including the traffic regulations and rules and regulations for the past like two years. Um, so this uh, should adopt the code in its entirety, rather than bits and pieces. Um, so it's, it's quite a long um, document. I will try to put it in the shared drive, so everybody can get a chance to review it without having to rush. Um.
All right, so can you also address the draft uh, solar bylaw?
Yes, that was my next, my next part, so I did talk with Marilyn Richards on Friday. Um, I wanted to explain that the, this process is kind of strange because it is still very much a working draft document, um, which is a little bit different from the approaches previously where we've had almost a complete bylaw um, presented to the board to adopt. Um, and that's because it's a pretty hot topic in the town, um, especially over the last couple of years, um, so I wanted to put something before you that's um, in a public hearing setting that the board can then work with and add, remove, however you'd like to. Um.
So we still have, we still have a moratorium in place, is that correct?
No, the moratorium, I believe expired on the first of September. So we do have a public hearing date for the solar bylaw, that will be September twenty-first. Um, and that was another part of it, I wanted the date nailed down for the public hearing. Um, so there's no question that the town is um, making moves and taking action to address solar in residential zones.
So if any petitioner tried to pull a PLH on us and file an application between uh, let's say tomorrow, um, what bylaw would we use as it relates to that type, that applicant?
So, so PLH, so putting it in a residential zone, that's a tricky one right now. I think once the twenty-first hits, um, they would have to wait until the bylaws adopted. Um, if that's, if my understanding of that process is correct. Um, I know we do have a couple um, applications pending for solar arrays in uh, industrial zones, so those will be coming before the board in the next couple of months, but I have not received any word of a residential sound proposal.
So I think that as a board, we would probably want you to um, tie that down? And maybe get clarification from either the town manager or town council that uh, we don't want a PLH coming in and um, sliding, sliding one in.
Right, at this point, um, with the advertising deadlines, they would not be able to get a project approved before the twenty-first for residential, it just isn't uh, possible. Um, but it is, I do want to nail down um, for my own sake, if somebody came in with an application before that bylaw is, is completed and adopted.
George?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, yeah, um, my understanding is that the uh, it freezes when we advertise the hearing.
Okay.
Okay, so the sooner we advertise, that freezes things.
Okay. But if it's, but if, but I mean, Bethany mentioned that it was in draft form because it's kind of a moving target, and if we make substantial changes to that, I don't know if it nullifies and we'd have to re-advertise, so.
I, I, I think advertising the um, the bylaw as it stand, proposed by law as it stands now is sufficient, okay, to um, to freeze it until such time as it's adopted. And it can be amended between now and then. But getting it, and, and we might consider that um, advertising it, let's say, in the uh, in, in the Republican rather than the reminder, um, just to get that date in there would be worth the extra expense, but that's my personal opinion.
I think that's a wonderful idea if it can be done.
So it has already been advertised. Um, so we are also, at least for the twenty-first. Um, and I have, I know Marilyn Richards taking a look at it as is uh, blanking on his name.
I think Mr. Page was a member of the planning board at the time?
Ralph Page is also taking a look at it and they will provide comments, I believe, either written comments or they'll come to the public hearing and provide comments um, in that form.
Okay.
Um, my next update is um, the town is a recipient from another um, MVP Action Grant. This is one that we are working with the town of Hampton with. Um, so the town of Hampton is kind of the lead community in this project, and it is a infrastructure assessment and prioritization of nature-based solutions and public outreach and participation. Um, that basically means it's a Culver Assessment project, um, heavily to do with DPW with um, a nature-based solution of some roadside pollinator habitats that will be going in, in East Long Meadow, um, I don't think they're going in, in Hampton. Um, so that was awarded in the last week or so from the state, um, and it will be a two-year project.
So uh, agenda items for the twenty-first, can you give us a quick peek?
Yep, so we will have um, two special permits. One is for um, a Joy Bowl, a poky restaurant that will be um, right on Maple Street where the uh, convenience store currently is. And we also have the special permit for what will be replacing Patsy's, it's also a restaurant, um, Asian cuisine, um, I believe. And we will have the solar bylaw, I'm guessing we'll have a handful of site plan waivers. Um, and I think that's the, that's the gist of it this time.
We also have the site plan for Dwight Road for the uh, improvements to the um, St. Paul the Apostle Church.
Oh, yep.
All right, you all done Bethany?
Yes.
Okay, so uh, unfortunately, we're losing a valuable member of the planning board staff, Rebecca Jones, who was leaving us on uh, Friday. So I just wanted to express my gratitude to you, it's been a pleasure working with you and uh, we wish you well in all your future endeavors.
Thank you very much, it's been a pleasure to work with you all and I will really miss my job.
Okay. Any other business? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, by roll call, Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Ms. Sarah Swallow?
Aye.
Oh, and, and before we close that, so we have to make sure that uh, we have sufficient attendance at the twenty-first, September twenty-first meeting. I will be in attendance. Mr. Torsha, will you be in attendance?
Absolutely, barring something uh, extraordinary that comes up between now and then.
Mr. Kingston?
I'll be there.
Okay, all right, great, okay.
I don't know if I can be there.
What's that?
I emailed Bethany um, this morning, but I'm not sure. Um, I'm in the biggie and I just don't know if I'll be able to find a quiet place with um, enough away from people with enough um, capacity to have internet access to attend.
All righty, all right. Well, we'll try to make, we'll try to make it work and we'll try to touch base with uh, Mr. Punderson wherever in the United States he might be. All right, uh, and I'm an aye, so that item passes. Good night, everybody, thanks for attending. Good care, bye-bye.